We call the Wilmer City Council meeting to order for July 1st, 2019. Roll call.
Council, or Mayor Kelvin.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Mesky.
Here.
Schwantes.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Alvarado.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Consent items, Ms. Thompson.
On tonight's consent agenda, we have for council's approval, the city council minutes of June 17th, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Board minutes of June 24th, Planning Commission minutes of June 19th, the accounts payable report June 13th through June 26th, for council's acceptance, the Park and Recreation Board minutes of May 15th, Central Community Transit Operation Board minutes of May 28th, and the Wilmer Lakes Area CVB Board meeting minutes of May 14th.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve the agenda as, or the consent items as presented. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Introduction of new employees, Mr. Gary Manzer.
Thank you, and this is an honor for me tonight to introduce some new employees, but first, before I do that, I just want to publicly thank Sam and Kelsey for all the work they do to get our interviews lined up and schedule all the meetings and stuff. It's a lot to get together, and I do appreciate that. But I'll introduce our two, why don't you guys come on up here. So first, first I'm going to introduce is Jason Wog. He's an operator. He started on the 17th, I think, 17th. And then Megan Imes, she's also an operator. She started on the 20th. And then today, in the back, is Josh Juven. He started with us today. So today's his first day, and he's the mechanic. So with these three additions, we're back to full staff, and we're rolling right along, and I want to thank you.
Thank you. Would each of you like to just, just say if you have family, how long you've been in Wilmer, those types of things?
I got a, I'm married. I got three kids and two stepkids. And I've lived in Wilmer. I was born in Wilmer, lived here most of my life, and moved away for about five years, and came back, and happy to be back. Happy to be here.
We're glad you're here.
Thank you.
You bet.
I live in Candy, Ohio. I grew up north Candy on a farm, went to Wilmer High School, and went to Ridgewater for college, and now I'm here.
All right, great. Congratulations. We're glad you're aboard.
I live in Wilmer. I got two little boys, and I've lived here for about 10 years. Been a mechanic the whole time, so.
Congratulations. We're glad you're with us. So any comments from the council? Councilmember Fagerly.
I just want to thank them for being employed by the city. And Megan is the one that put the clips on our signs for the parade.
Wow.
So we didn't have to unscrew them and jockey them around. So it was a good idea. Thank you.
Ingenuity is, is a good thing, so we appreciate that. And you're, you guys are all getting into a great group of people. The Public Works Department does fabulous work in our city, and, you know, you'll have an occasional person that's not happy with you, but that's all right. Just send them to the mayor or the council. We'll take care of them.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So we're welcome, and we're glad you're here. Welcome aboard. And you can certainly stick around for the entire meeting if you want, or if you want to exit and go and spend time with your family in the rain, you can do that, too. So we're, we're fine with whatever you choose to do, or whatever Gary gives you permission to do, I should say. So anyways, at this point. Okay, open forum. Mr. Steve Wright, please state whether you live in the city or outside of the city.
Good evening, guys. My name is Steve Wright. I do live in the city, and I work in the city. Okay? I'm here this evening to thank the city of Wilmer, the mayor, and the council members for entertaining a 10-year lease extension for the Wilmer Stingers. This extension is not only a necessity for the organization and business, it's a must for the city of Wilmer. I've lived three blocks from the ballpark for over 25 years, and over the last 10 years, to see the excitement of the fans and the neighbors that walk and ride past my home is fantastic. The unbelievable fan support is overwhelming. To say we've enjoyed our summer collegiate baseball neighbors, the fireworks, the sounds of family having fun, 36 great nights of summer, beautiful summer evenings, is simply an understatement. The Stingers are a first-class operation, and this 10-year lease extension for them, without question, in my opinion, is a must. We've been extremely fortunate to have a franchise that has attracted thousands of positive screaming fans to our community and our first-class ballpark. The games are an escape for some, but also a gathering place where our community truly comes together. I've lived here my entire life, raised my family here, owned and ran businesses in this community. I can truly say the Stingers have been the greatest addition to our community in the past 10 years. And it's tough to think what it would be like not to have this organization in our community on beautiful summer nights. We're extremely fortunate to have a team in this community and the size of Wilmer, considering there are 22 teams in the Northwoods League. Wilmer, I believe, is the smallest town for that team. We also enjoy one of the most winning and successful teams out of all the 22 teams, and that pays a lot to Mark and Ryan for their unwavering, unbelievable commitment to this community. And last, as a business owner and a business manager, I can't imagine owning and operating a business that doesn't know if they're going to have a roof over their head in five years, but yet continues to develop and operate in the community and spend money in the community. That just simply makes sense. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
You bet.
We have that as an action item underneath our finance committee, which will be up next. So if you wish to stick around to hear the results of that meeting, you certainly are willing to open to that. That's all I had for public comments. Next is the finance committee report. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. The finance committee met on June, Tuesday, June 20th, in the conference room at City Office Building. All of the members were present, Audrey Nelson, Rick Fagerly, Andrew Plowman, and Julie Osmus. In addition, was finance owner, Finance Director Okens, Park and Rec Director Baumgart, representatives from the Stingers and the Baseball Association. There were no public comments, and our first item was the Wilmer Stinger lease agreement. The Wilmer Stinger lease, with the additional wording addressing the usage of the concession sand, was again reviewed. Both the Park and Rec Board and the Planning Commission have recommended approval of the 10-year length of agreement and inserted wording for the use of the concession sand and process to be used for all organizations in relationship to the Stinger organization. It was then moved, seconded, and passed to introduce a resolution to authorize the mayor and administrator to sign the lease agreement as submitted, and I will enter that motion now.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve a lease with the Wilmer Stingers and the city of Wilmer for a 10-year lease. Discussion. Councilmember Elvarado.
When I was reviewing the lease, I was looking at item number 34 in the lease, and, and I shared an email with Mr. Scott, our city attorney, and I was wondering if we could, hold on for a second, change the language to include where it says American Legion, BFW, or Wilmer Rails Games. I was thinking of changing, moving the or to the end of the Wilmer Rail Games, or any organization that may wish to use the facility not related to baseball, or something like that, that kind of broadened the terms. And I understand that you've had a discussion with us about this?
Correct.
And what was the outcome of that discussion?
That we'll put in there so other users can use it, can use the facility and have the, have the Stingers have discretion on concession sand usage as well.
Okay. That's all. I just wanted to bring that up so that we don't limit it to just baseball. If somebody else wants to use the field, or...
Okay. Are you asking for anything to be changed on the lease?
No, just that wording.
So you're asking that wording to be added?
Correct.
Okay. So last time we changed wording, then it was sent back to Park and Rec. Is that what you're asking to do as well?
No, no. I've under, I sent an email to Mr. Scott.
I'm unaware of that.
Okay. I sent an email, I sent an email to Mr. Scott, and I understand that the players involved, the Stinger representatives, and our Park and Rec Director have discussed it, and they're okay with it.
Okay. So are you, so then you would introduce that as a motion, an amendment to the motion?
Okay. I'd like to, do you have the wording for me, Mr. Scott, please?
I believe the wording is in paragraph 34, where it states, "For non-league events at the facility conducted by Ridgewater College, Wilmer High School, the Minnesota State High School League, American Legion, VFW, Wilmer Rail Games, or any other organization that may be granted use of the facility." Comment. The rest of the paragraph remains unchanged.
I would make a motion to adjust the language to include that, which was quoted by Mr. Scott.
A friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment.
Councilmember Plowman.
Point of order. I don't believe an amendment is necessary if the verbiage is contained in the lease that we're making a motion on, is it?
This verbiage is not in the lease before you.
It's not in the lease before you. It's being added. That's why it takes a friendly amendment to add it. Unless I'm missing something. I just got my computer up. I'm having computer troubles, so. And I wasn't aware of this before. I just heard it just now, so. Of course, I don't need to be told about it. I'm not saying that.
I don't think anyone knows.
Councilmember Mesky.
This is the first time I'm hearing about it as well. We're not negotiating a contract here. This has been discussed by both parties.
That's what I understand. Correct. I'm not trying to renegotiate anything. I'm just asking to broaden the potential to use the facility for...
Nope, that's okay. I understand.
That's all I'm saying. Asking.
Um, so do I have a second? I don't believe I have a second, do I? Um, I don't want to continue the conversation. We had a point of order. I ruled on the point of order. Is the council in agreement with my ruling on the court of order? All in favor of my ruling, signify by saying aye.
I don't.
Those opposed?
I...
Okay. We're making this much more complicated than it needs to be. Mr. Scott, give me some help.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think this is a, in the grand scheme of things, a rather minor change to the lease. We, when I received the inquiry this morning, bounced it off staff. Staff, I think, contacted the Stingers. I don't think there were any issues with this language. I believe the amendment has been suggested as a friendly amendment that would require consent of the maker of the motion and the seconder. And if that's the case, I think we are good. If not, it would require a formal motion to amend.
Okay. So you just heard the motion made by Councilmember Elvarado, the explanation from our city attorney. There was a point of order, so there does not need to be a vote on the point of order?
No. I think the mayor, as chair of the meeting, you just rule on the point of order, and then it would be up to a council member to appeal that ruling.
Okay. So the mayor rules that the point of order was explained, and is, does anybody want any more action on the point of order? Councilmember Nelson.
No. Not on the point of order.
Okay. So now we'll go back to the motion, or the friendly amendment to the motion, which is simply adding one simple line.
Did we have a second?
There's not a second. And that's why I'm...
The original...
The point of order came fairly quickly, so I want to make sure that we're given a proper time for a second to the motion. The friendly amendment.
Before that.
Council, Councilmember Mesky.
When the Stingers' contract has come up, there was a motion to approve it. Was there a second to that?
Yes.
Who was the second?
Yes, there was.
Who made the second to that?
Me.
Are you okay with the friendly amendment that was offered by Mr. Elvarado?
I'd like to hear his explanation on who might want to use it during the baseball season.
I, I don't know. That's a good question, and I thought of that. And I, I really don't know. And I, I'm not saying, I don't know. I really don't know. But 10 years is a large spans of time, and there's a, a lot of creativity out there. I don't know. But I don't want to not allow that facility not to be used by another organization who may wish to use it. You know what I'm saying? I, I don't, you know, I really don't know. I don't have an idea. Maybe the Boy Scouts. I don't know. But I just don't want to not give them the opportunity to be able to use the facility, if they so wish to use the facility. That's all. I'm, I'm just trying to broaden it out. It's a community thing, and that's how I'm, I'm looking at it.
If he's not in favor of it, then you can... Councilmember Nelson.
I'm just seeking clarification again. Mr. Scott said we can do this as a friendly amendment, and if I'm hearing correctly, both the Stingers and our staff have agreed that this is something that's okay. And you wrote up the wording for how it could be in there.
Correct. Councilmember Nelson, that is correct.
I will accept that as a friendly amendment to my motion.
Are you seconding the friendly amendment, then?
No, because Mr. Scott said we don't need to do that.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think this is a situation. It's a fairly routine change. If the maker of the motion and the person who seconded the motion, both are in agreement to the change, you can simply vote on the main motion as containing the amendment.
I agree.
Motion's, that, motion's on the table. The Stingers are here. Do you wish to speak to the amendment?
Hi, I'm Mark Jurzak, corner of the Stingers. That, the amendment is fine. This has already been taking place in that ballpark. You can, you know, reserve that ballpark, just like any other park in the city of Wilmer. There's been graduations out there, different events out there, and they've used, there's been weddings. They could use the Stingers as a care, or they, or they choose not to. It's, it's been happening in the last 10 years out there. So adding this language is, is fine with us.
Okay. And our interim administrator, do you have any comments in regards to this at all?
No, I concur with the city attorney. That this is fine.
And staff, any comments?
I'm good with it.
We have a motion on the table, and it's been seconded, additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Thank you. Next, Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. Our next item on our agenda was the 2019 Street Improvement Financing. Staff submitted a request to the committee to start the process to finance the 2019 Street Improvement Program. The process that is required would be to, one, to introduce the ordinance authorizing the issuance of $4,740,000 in general obligation improvement bond, Series 2019A, and the levying of taxes to secure the payment on them. And second, to introduce a resolution to set a public hearing on the ordinance. After discussion, it was moved, seconded, and passed to introduce the ordinance authorizing the issuance of four, of $4,740,000 general obligation improvement, Series 2019A, and the levying of taxes to secure thereafter. It was moved and seconded to introduce the, a resolution calling for the public hearing on the ordinance for July 15th, 2019, and I will enter that resolution, that motion now.
Second. Motion been made to consider an ordinance of, an introduction of an ordinance to authorize issuance of general obligation improvement bonds. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Councilmember Nelson.
I think I, I stated that motion because I went to the public hearing. So since we did that one...
I was covering it.
We will, I will introduce the motion to do the public hearing on July 15th.
The other ones are roll calls, so we have to do the second one, though. We did the first one first. Second. Resolution to call for public hearing for ordinance on July 15th. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Nelson.
The next item is the Invest in Wilmer Project financing resolution. Staff explained to the committee now that the referendum, state statute, and ordinance have all been passed, and in order to finance any costs incurred prior to issuing of any debt, that the city would need to declare its intent to reimburse itself for those costs. Staff also explained that by setting the amount of the resolution at the maximum allowed, that no further intent resolutions would be needed. It was also explained that this would not the requi, not require the city to issue the total amount of $30 million if timing of projects allow cash to be used to cover the costs. It was moved, seconded, and passed to introduce a resolution declaring the official intent of the city of Wilmer to reimburse certain capital expenditures from the proceeds of tax-exempt bonds, and I will enter that motion now.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. In looking at this this afternoon, there's nothing in here about the 10% that is required by the, by the legislature that they sent back to us. Is that being covered someplace else? The 10% amount that, that was something that Dave Baker and Andrew Lang both wanted, and then also came out of the ruling when it passed out of the chambers in the tax bill. And this doesn't allow any of the 10% monies to move back or move around, because it specifically states the amounts that have to be sent on each. So is that the, is that the intent of the finance committee?
I cannot speak to that 10%. I did speak with Kathy Aho today also, and she simply said that this was a requirement, I think, at the national, you know, at that level, and this simply authorizes us to go up to the $30 million in bonding. So if you are uncomfortable with that, I can't speak to that.
Well, I just want to make sure that our, that our wording is right, because this was a stipulation that happened. And I mean, you were at the meetings in St. Paul, and this was brought up. And you've been at the local option sales tax meetings, and I just want to make sure that we have that ability to, let's see our finance director here.
Not here.
I mean, that was one of the requirements that was put in the statute. I just, I assume that was looked at.
I think this was just an aggregate total of the 30 million. So I'm not sure that it's specific, I mean, that it has to be specific to the individual projects. It's just saying that if necessary, we can bond up to the 30 million. And I can ask for clarification. I don't know. Mr. Scott, you got any thoughts on what he, the statements?
Thank you, Mayor.
I think the mayor's supposed to run the meeting, so if we're going to ask for staff and others to...
I apologize.
To, to comment on meetings, unless somebody else wants to run the meeting, I'm fine with that. I mean, we're starting to do this on a pretty regular basis of, a council member will ask staff or ask anybody to make comments, and if that's where we're headed, that's fine. Is that our intent?
I have no comment. I, I have, I have a question. You asked about what the finance committee said. This is how it was presented, to go up to the 30 million. I was asking for clarification of our, from our city attorney.
Anybody else have any questions? Councilmember Mesky.
Could you explain 3C? Colonial area expenditures, up to 20% of the area, what, what does it mean by that?
Where are you at? I'm just...
I'm on the second page of the resolution on the top. 3C. I'm curious on what it says, up to the amount, not to, not in excess of 20% of the aggregate issue of the tax-exempt bonds are reasonably expected by the city to finance the projects? By my calculation, that's like $6 million. Is that, those aren't additional funds over the 30 million?
I don't believe I'm authorized to answer that question.
Did the, did you guys talk about that?
Somebody out there seems to know. Can we call on...
Mr. Eller?
Hi.
Yes.
I'm not your municipal advisor, but I am, I am a municipal advisor. So it sounds like that's a reimbursement resolution under federal law. And the 20%, if I remember the format of these resolutions, that's, so 20% of preliminary expenses are exempt from having to pass a resolution like this. So it's not an addition or anything. It's just part of that 10, 30 million, or whatever that is. And so this is just, and then a reimbursement resolution is, is under federal law. They just don't want you to reach back too far to go grab project costs from 10 years ago and stuff. So there's some year, annual limitations, things like that, to issue a tax-exempt bond. So I think it's not specific to any project, but I suspect there are some projects, I would say there would be a, sort of a broad general description of the projects you intend to finance, and not just put a 30 million in there. Because when it comes time to finance the projects, we're going to have to look at, to see if those, if something was sort of authorized in there that sort of tags on to that 30 million. Yep.
Thank you very much. And that probably also means that when you actually go get the bonding, that's when that 10% idea that was brought up here is probably going to come into play as well, where we're not supposed to shift more than 10% of any of these particular funds into the different funds. That'll probably come when we get the financing, I would assume. So this is just a...
Yeah, this is kind of just an umbrella resolution, so to speak. It just sort of, it sort of allows you to, to reach back and finance expenditures you paid with cash up to a certain period of time and up to a certain amount that you can, you can, it's tax-exempt bonds, not taxable bonds, so I don't know. Hopefully that helps a little bit. So.
Thank you.
Yep.
I just know that this was a real touchy subject at the legislature, so that's why I'm just trying to make sure we've got it right. Because before, we had the 10% in there. Mr. Scott, do you know anything about the 10%?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I am aware of the 10% flexibility that was built into the special legislation. I know that the ordinance the city passed to implement the local option sales tax contained that provision, allowing the 10% change between the different project funds. And though I did not draft this resolution for reimbursement, I'm reading the language. It does refer to those specific project amounts as approximate amounts. So I, just based on that, think we're, think the city would be okay, that in combination with the ordinance you already passed. I don't think this resolution locks you into these specific totals for each specific project. It's, they're approximate figures.
Okay. Official questions. Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Nelson.
The last item was just a discussion item. The May finance report was reviewed, and the discussion on the timing of it, it is in your packet for information. We will, Mr. Okens is out on vacation this week, so we will be bringing it back for review along with that. There was no other business to come before the meeting, and we adjourned at 6:35, and I will enter a motion to approve the minutes at this time.
Second. Motion made and seconded to file the minutes. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Community development report. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met Monday, June 24th, at 5:15 at City Hall. Present was myself, Vicki Davis, Sean Mesky, and Kathy Schwantes. Item two was public comment. No one was there to speak to us. Item three was the floodplain ordinance draft. This was for information only. It is proceeding per the schedule with Dr. Ramstead. It will be coming back to our community development committee next week, and then it'll be coming back to the council. Item four was a modification of Legacy on First TIF Plan and its municipal development district. First, the modified TIF plan addresses Assistant State Auditor Jason Nord's concerns that the Legacy NGM Magnum TIF plans cite old state laws, that the duration of the original TIF is not correct, and that it is supposed to be plus one year per TIF guideline. So we had a 15-year, add one, so it should be 16 years. Legacy appears to suggest an extension may be necessary... Legacy appears to suggest an extension may be necessary but is unclear, that the estimates of tax increment to be generated provide two estimates and unconventionally separates administration costs out. The estimates on that plan collection form and plan document do not match. There are small discrepancies in annual amounts used, that the ultimate cost estimates are left blank, and the Assistant State Auditor found it unclear whether the cost estimates recognize original net tax capacity of the district in relation to project costs. Secondly, the modified TIF plan addresses an inappropriately municipal development district which has been made the same size as the project's TIF district. The municipal development district has been enlarged to be the same size as the community or city limits, so that per state law, portion of money from the TIF districts are available to be spent on other TIF-eligible projects in the larger municipal development district, if the city council chooses. The municipal development district was also enlarged so that the city will not need to modify its size over again. Expanding the municipal development district to be the same size as the city limits simplifies existing and new TIF administration, because parcel boundaries change over time, and parcels often get combined and split. Natural occurrences that make it difficult to maintain the boundaries of the municipal development district that was originally the same size as the project's TIF district. A motion was made and seconded to introduce a public hearing at council July 1st tonight, to have the public hearing during July 15th council meeting for approval of a resolution to modify the TIF district plan and municipal development district, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to modify the Legacy on First TIF Plan and Municipal Development District. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, that motion carries.
Item five, the modification of the GM Magnum TIF Plan and its Municipal Development District. It's virtually identical to item four. This plan was supposed to be eight years, so we're supposed to add one, equals nine years. So everything else is the same, and a motion was made and seconded to have the second public hearing during July 15th council meeting to approve a resolution to modify the TIF plan and the municipal development district, and I'll introduce that.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to modify the GM Magnum TIF Plan and Municipal Development District to have a public hearing on July 15th. Discussion. Councilmember Fagerly.
So at the meeting, Dr. Ramstead told us that the auditor had sent out emails to the city back in 2017 with these issues, but nothing was ever done, so that's why we have to modify these TIF...
I'm not modifying them now?
Yeah.
Anything else that...
No.
Okay. There's a motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. Those opposed, that motion passes. Next, we have Labor Relations Committee, Councilmember Mesky.
I have to file the minutes. Okay. I make a motion to file the minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to file the minutes. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, that motion carries. Labor Relations, Councilmember Mesky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Labor Relations Committee met June 24th, and we were all in attendance. Highlights of our meeting, we did look at, there was an employee engagement survey results, and Councilmember Davis offered that perhaps we'd like to know the answer to a single question that was included with the survey, which was, what do you think the elected officials could do to help improve employee morale? And you have an attachment in your packet, and our HR director put them into things that would cost no money, some that would cost some money, and some that would cost a lot of money. We had a lot of good discussion about these and thought some of these things are things that we really should pay more attention to. They're for information for you tonight, but I'd ask you to take a look at them and now understand them in the light of, this was a request made by a council member to put into this employee survey, and this is the results that came out. Some of the discussion, we kicked around a little bit, that maybe doing something, they had mentioned Strength Finders tests for employees specifically, we thought maybe the idea of some employee development that could even include council development as part of that would be something to explore, and perhaps, you know, as we're entering, the council members, we all have the, you can add something to the budget request. We were even kicking around the idea that maybe the committee might even put a joint one together for doing something like that, if there is an appetite for that. In addition to that, there was another piece, escapes my mind here, about...
Appreciation.
Yes, and the appreciation for employees, putting in a budget item for some of that as well, because we've done a lot of those activities in the last couple of years, and they've been fairly positive, like the pool parties and things like that, and maybe there could be a budget for that. So a couple of things that came out of that survey that food for thought, for you to think about. We did then look at the personnel policy, the section number four, and as you know, we are bringing these policy changes in pieces. Section four that comes in is actually, most of it is as appears in the current handbooks and such, but again streamlined. The one piece that I would draw your attention to is the posting procedure steps and things for hiring that is conforming to what we currently do, but if you have any questions for those, our HR director can answer those, I can do my best. The only thing that is different in there is the piece about when we do a search, having an internal and external posting for that, I believe, right away, which would be on page 249 of your packet, number four. Other than that, I would make a motion to approve section four of the employee handbook.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve section four of the employee handbook, discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, that motion does carry.
All right.
Councilmember Mesky.
We, I didn't mention, we did have public comment at our meeting as well, from one of our employees, talking about her job and who her supervisor was, because that was relevant to some other discussions that we were having at the committee. We did also look at the next section of the personnel policy, so you could expect that to come at our next meeting. Our last item, we went into closed session to discuss labor negotiation strategy. The contents of that meeting, although not public at this time, were important enough that we have no recommendation for that topic, but it's important enough that it will be a topic for the entire council at a future meeting, we are hoping the first week in August. You will be getting a confidential email from the attorney outlining the information relevant to that conversation that we will have at that meeting in the future. And there was no other items to come before the Labor Committee, so I would move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to file the minutes of the Labor Relations Committee, discussion.
Question.
Councilmember Nelson.
I just would like to go, a question on item number three. On the agenda for the Labor Meeting, it indicated that there were employee engagement survey results, but the attachment to it said anonymous employee survey. And so I'm just curious, you addressed the anonymous employee survey, but I'm just wondering what the other survey items, was there an actual survey done?
Yes, this was just one item on a survey that is given to our employees. This was an additional item, is my understanding, but...
Yep, it was a survey I put out, oh, sorry. It was a survey I put out, part of our Employee Engagement Committee, it was six or seven questions, I believe, and so that was just a question I included on it, since Councilmember Davis had asked for that information.
Okay. No, just was curious how the survey results were going to be used, or who had done the survey, so...
Yep, I drafted it and sent it out, and it was more questions related to what our Employee Engagement Committee can do and changes that we can make at the city.
Thank you.
Additional comments? Motion made and seconded to file the minutes, no additional comments, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, that motion does carry. Next is Finance Committee Report, Councilmember Nelson of June 25th.
Thank you. The Finance Committee met on June 25th, and all of the committee members were present, Audrey Nelson, Rick Fagerly, Andrew Plowman, Julie Osmus. Also in attendance was Finance Director Okins, Park and Director, Park and Director Baumgart, City Administrator Grommets, City Project Manager Heen, and representatives from Ingen and Associates. The discussion was on the Four Seasons Shelter plans, and Ingen and Associates were present to explain the changes in the design of the proposed Robins Island Four Seasons Shelter. The proposed changes, as described, would reduce previously presented estimates and designs to fall within the estimated dollars available for the project. A number of the items were discussed, discussed were the changes from the previous proposals, which were less plumbing due to the size being reduced to a 56 by 50 building, 50-foot building, no fireplace, no upper mechanical room, LP siding, no staff office, program spacer storage, and an HVAC to propane furnace, less site paving, no fire pit, compost by city, and non-structural fill supplied by city. Other items explained included the contingency amount is planned to cover any soil corrections needed due to the geotechnical unit price being in the estimates. Any furnishings and site plantings and landscaping would be added if funds were available. After lengthy discussion, items that the committee would like to see bid as alternates included the following. Number one, asphalt shingles instead of the standing seam metal roofing. Number two, air conditioning. Number three, wood ceiling in community room. Number four, spray foam insulation. Number five, ground concrete floor. Number six, wall feature in community room. It was moved, seconded, and passed to approve the concept, proposed concept drawings as presented, order the preparation of plans and specification, and advertise for bids, and I will enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to enter into plans and specs and advertise for bids for Four Seasons Shelter at Robins Island. Discussion. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Point of clarification, the site plan that we have for the building or the architectural rendering, we have a couple different ones in our packet, and I want to be sure that we know specifically, and that the entire council knows, which one we are voting on here.
Can someone from staff go to the podium and pull up the picture so that citizens can also see what we're voting on? Please. Mr. Baumgartner?
I'm wondering if this is supposed to be a ready or something over there. I'm not speaking. Ingen and Associates are here also, you can ask them.
Hey, this is going to be the main entrance and the east elevation, basically the outside of the building, of the structure. And then this is going to be basically the floor plan and what the, what we're calling like the accent wall would look like.
Two more pages down.
Can you keep going, Rob?
Okay. And then on the bottom here, you'll see what we did is, instead of having stone go all the way up on the outside of the building, we only went about halfway to a wings coating, and then the rest of it will be LP siding. And that was something that we talked about with the public work staff for a maintenance issue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Page 264 on the packet, if you go two further down.
Okay.
The floor plan looks slightly different than it did on page 262, and so I'm wondering if there's a technicality, or maybe there's just some explanation that makes sense.
Richard Ingen is here from Ingen Associates, too, if you'd like to have clarification from him.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, council. What we did, we, one of the issues to reduce cost was to reduce the amount of plumbing fixtures we have in the building. There is, the code dictates for the size of a building, so many fixtures. The original plan, what we started a year ago, was to take the fixtures that were in the bathing houses and things on the site now, they were much bigger, and we scaled a little closer down, made the plumbing a little simpler, the building a little smaller, because that we felt was the will of the council, and so we reduced the numbers of plumbing fixtures. This is the plan that was approved and was being developed. It's still well adequate for any facilities here. On the park, the time when you'll have a conflict with fixtures is when you have large outdoor events, and there is no mathematical way to say how large those crowds will be. This will certainly go a long way to ease those stresses.
That satisfies my question, thank you.
Additional questions? Councilmember Mesky.
You mentioned some contingencies. The first question, do we have some estimates of those contingencies? The second one would be, what's the floor going to be made of, if it's not made of concrete?
Could I hear, question again?
Well, I heard concrete floors were a...
They're all concrete floors.
But I thought I heard that was a contingency they wanted to...
There's a ground concrete, which is polished.
Oh, I see.
Smooth finish and coloring.
Got it.
And we have several choices what that could be, and it's a big difference, but the floors will be concrete, yeah.
And then what's the contingency, amount of the contingency?
Okay. The items, some of the items we were talking about, furnishings, at one time, and I think, if I recall right, there was a budget of 20 to 25,000, 30,000 of tables, chairs, and different things. Engineered fill, we are including what we think would be needed according to the soil warnings we have, but they're not, it's not a simple thing, everything is different, it varies around, and so there's sort of a mathematical calculation, that's what the bids will be based on. If indeed, there's some differences, that could be increased or decreased. I feel fairly comfortable with what we've done with that, we should be okay, but that, we always like to have a unit price for that, because when we get into construction, it has to happen, we can't just wait, we have to do it, so that'll be checked, if there's a difference, it'll be measured, and it's just a mathematical thing. Site planting, we're sort of leaving that out, we'd like to have some trees and shrubs and things done. We will see after you get the contract what money there might be available for that.
In the original, I think your question was on what the contingency was in the budget?
Well, she had mentioned, she had a whole list of things, and one I just caught my ear right away was concrete floor, I thought, but you've differentiated that it will be made of concrete, because I thought a dirt floor would probably be, if you're conventional. But it's going to get the prices of what some of these are. I think there were two things that have been mentioned. One is things that we reduced from the project. That was the first thing that was gone through. The second thing, there was a question of some alternates, and the alternates, one was going to asphalt shingles rather than a standing seam metal shingle. Air conditioning, I think the park board felt that we didn't necessarily need it. We have a furnace, so the adding the air conditioning is not a big item, but that's an issue that can be discussed. A wood ceiling in the community room is a separate item. Spray foam insulation and lieu of fiberglass and board insulation, this is a desirable thing, it's a little more expensive, but we'll have a price on it. The ground concrete is more like a trazo floor, it would be like what was done at the Civic Center, that floor. And there's pros and cons, but that'll be, we'll have some prices for a conversation. And where the fireplace was, there's a wall feature that, there's some ideas that are down, and there'll be a separate price for that.
Councilmember Mesky.
Well, I guess, if you can give me a ballpark figure, because I know, I mean, we had done some other projects, I thought it would be a great idea to pull some things out, and then... some things out, and then we end up putting them back in, and then it costs a lot more money, so I'm just curious.
We have these identified, so they can't, you will have detailed prices before decisions are made.
Oh, we will. All right, all right. Very good. Thank you.
Just some discussion. This is a simple motion, so all in favor of the motion to, uh, o, order the plans and specs and advertise for bids, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Councilmember Nelson.
That was our only item of business, and I would enter a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to file the minutes. Just some discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Next is resol, resolution to amend the assessment rule for the street, twenty nineteen street and other improvements. Uh, councilman, or, uh, City Engineer Sean Christensen.
Mayor, members of the council, as you're aware, two weeks ago, or four weeks ago, actually, I think, no, two weeks ago, you had your hearing to, uh, for your assessments. You had some positive comments and some negative comments. Couple of the, couple of the people have come into our office, uh, both Brian's and mine, in the last week to discuss their assessments with us. We've modified two of them, parcel number ninety-five dash nine-one-two dash zero-nine-five-two, and parcel ninety-five dash nine-one-four dash two-three-five-zero. The recommendation would be to adopt the amendment to the assessment rule, and the financial impact, of course, is the same, although we would be, um, receiving a few dollars less in assessments over the course of the projects.
City Attorney Scott, do I have to open this up as a public hearing again, or is the public hearing, uh, in the hands of the council because it was continued?
Uh, no, Mayor, I would recommend that you open the public hearing again. It's a reconvened hearing. Continue hearing.
So I'll open the public hearing. Now, we have had comments from our city engineer on the, uh, two, uh, parcel numbers. Uh, anybody here from the public that wishes to speak to these items? Is there anybody here who wishes to speak to the items that are in front of the council? Sheen in hearing, now I'll close the public, uh, meeting, public hearing, and move it to the council table. Uh, and again, uh, this, we then need to act on staff's findings, or do we have to act on each of these individually like we did last time?
Um, Mr. Mayor, in this case, you have a resolution specifically addressing the assessments for the two parcels that were left open. I think you can, uh, pass one motion to amend those assessments, if the council wishes to do so, and pass the resolution, uh, presented to you. And I, just as a matter of clarification, I do believe you have an updated version of the resolution that includes the specific reductions recommended for those two parcels.
Where would that be?
It was given to you.
Oh. Yeah. Okay. Okay, is there somebody that wants to, uh, introduce a resolution amending the twenty nineteen assessment rule as is presented in front of you tonight?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantus.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next is consideration of Wilmer Y property staging and material. Mr. Christensen.
Mayor, members of the council, we broke this into two items, based on the comments on the last council meeting. This first item is to, I'm sorry, on this, on this agenda, report, there are all three Mr. Mayor, which would you like to discuss first?
Um, I wasn't part of the discussion, so, uh, maybe somebody from Public Works can give, uh, which one do you prefer to do first?
Your meeting?
It's my, you're correct, it's my meeting, but I was not part of the conversation, so I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, I could offer to go through the letters as described in the count, in the action report, if you wish.
Certainly.
Letter A in the action report indicates a property purchase of eleven and a half acres from the city of Wilmer. The land is currently owned by the city of Wilmer. It was, it was previous property required for the old airport. It's a southeast corner of County Road fifty-five and Highway forty. Hoffman Construction has approached the city of Wilmer with an oper, with an offer to, with an opportunity to purchase that property from us to use as fill material for the, uh, project that is in the very near vicinity. And we had a market analysis done on that property, if you'll recall, maybe a year ago, when, when another entity was interested in purchasing. We've used that same property value. Hoffman has agreed verbally to, to that price, and so the offer is to purchase that eleven and a half acres from the city for the use of that, uh, project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve selling the property to Hoffman Construction as borrow material for the Wilmer Y project. Doesn't this have to go to a public hearing and be approved by the planning commission?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the next item on your agenda, which is kind of why I was asking which one you wanted to do first, um, number sixteen on your agenda items, is the, uh, introduction of the ordinance of the sale of property, and therefore, yes, would go to a, a public hearing, um, next week, July fifteenth.
Okay. And again, I'm at a disadvantage, because I wasn't at the Public Works meeting where this was talked about. This is a carryover from the, from the Public Works meeting, and so, um, I don't know anything what was talked about. I didn't listen to the tape. So, um, so is this a simple motion?
Mayor, members of the council, this is a, a motion to introduce the ordinance and to set a public hearing on July fifteenth for the sale of the property that was just described.
Okay, so that's item number sixteen on our agenda.
Number sixteen on your agenda.
Okay, so the motion that's on the table, that was made by Councilmember Plowman, seconded by Councilmember, uh, Mesky, I thought was to the Hoffman property purchase of eleven point five acres.
That's correct. Which also, which also introduces the ordinance and sets a public hearing.
Okay. Councilmember Mesky.
What are all the components that we're doing here? Because we can just put them all in one motion. So, I mean, yeah.
Councilmember Mesky, the first car form you had was identical to what was at the Public Works Committee and at last, um, month's meeting. I combined all three into one item because it's one topic with three sub-items on that. Subitem A is the property purchase, which ventures into item number sixteen on tonight's agenda, which is the ordinance and the public hearing that involves the sale of the property. After this, I would recommend we go back to item fifteen on your agenda to discuss B and C.
Okay, so is the maker and the second or the motion, uh, understanding that your motion was to sale of city-owned land, to, to make a motion and set a public hearing for July fifteenth? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so a motion made and seconded to sell public land, uh, and to set that public hearing for July fifteenth. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Mr. Christensen.
Mayor, members of the council, I do want to say, I apologize, I should have done B and C first, after that little bit of discussion, and maybe that would have been less confusing. But, we're moving forward here to, item B, letter, or, item fifteen, letter B, is the use of the old airport taxiway and the driveway to the old VOR, if anybody's familiar with that, as material or for material for the same Wilmer Y project. Hoffman Construction has approached us and would like to use, um, demo that taxiway, a portion of that taxiway, the old taxiway, rather, to use as fill material for these, the bridges and the, um, and, um, approaches to these bridges that are gonna go on in the next couple of years for this project. We've, uh, verbally had conversation about that, and it's in front of you now for official approval of the use of that taxiway portion for fill material.
And I believe what the council is saying is they would like B and C combined. Correct? Or do you want to do them separate? We can do them, Councilmember Osmus.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think they should maybe be separate, just because I think there's a little bit more involved with taking out the fill, as far as the details of how it's gonna be maintained after the fill is removed, and what's gonna happen with it. C, as far as just using the runway for the pipe, is just a matter of placing their pipes on that runway. There's no removal of any, any land or recovery of, uh, previous appearance. So I would say do them separate, just to make it clean.
Okay, so could I get a motion to allow, uh, Hoffman Construction to remove the existing airport taxiway and driveway to the VOR for use as fill material for the Wilmer Y project?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the use of the, uh, I'm sorry. To allow Hoffman Construction to remove the existing old airport taxiway and driveway to the VOR for use as fill material for the Wilmer Y project. Discussion. Councilmember Mesky.
First of all, I appreciate it. I think that's a great thing. Um, are we gonna overs, do some oversight of how far they can excavate and that kind of thing?
Uh, Councilmember Mesky, members of the council, we have done that. We've talked, again, it's, it's, it's written in an agreement that we're putting together for, uh, between the city and Hoffman Construction. Um, in, in general terms, it's a majority of the existing taxiway only, but it, but it leaves the access to the main runway for our snow, snow storage in the winter.
Perfect.
So, yes, we've got a map. They know the limits at this point. We know the limits, and I think, if I don't have a map included in your information, I can get you one very easily and quickly.
Thank you. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do believe it was discussed at the meeting, and our city engineer may, uh, choose to clarify this if he wishes, but we did have some discussion about the land, once this excavation takes place of the old taxiway and this, uh, the specific materials are taken from there, uh, there being verbiage in the agreement about that land being returned, uh, to some sort of usable, um, state, and as far as how the land is gonna look or be, um, left, once they're done with it. And I believe the consensus of the committee was that, that would be a good thing, but maybe our, uh, city engineer could, or would elaborate on that.
Sean?
Mayor, members of the council, yes, in the agreement itself, there will be, there is language that, uh, like I say, in general terms, puts the, puts some topsoil or fill back in there, so we don't just have a hole in the ground. We have maybe some grasses, so that we don't have erosion, um, similar to what we've done in the past for people that have, for contractors that have filled areas out there. Um, we're not gonna just, we're not gonna leave a mess. We're gonna have that as part of the agreement that, that, um, part of the assurances from, from Hoffman.
One final, if I may. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, discussion regarding the VOR building and the potential of having, um, some demo included in what they're doing out there. Has any discussion taken place after our last, uh, committee meeting regarding that?
Councilmember Plowman, not specifically with, with Hoffman, I've been on vacation off and on for the last, uh, couple of weeks. Actually, it's, it wasn't that good. Sorry. Couple, few times in the last couple of weeks. We need to have those discussions. It's in the agreement that, uh, as part of the deal, they're looking for fill materials. At this point, we're assuming that they're willing to accept that. Todd, with Hoffman is here, if we have questions for him, but, um, my assumption is that we can add that in there for, for additional fill material.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Would you like to call on the contractor?
Well, I, sure, if we may.
Mr. Hoffman? Or Todd, or, I don't know.
I'm, Todd, I'm here with Hoffman Construction, I'm the project manager.
Thank you for joining us. Um, just a question regarding, okay, so we've covered the, the taxiway, and we kind of know what the substrate of the taxiway is going to be, um, but there's discussion, there was discussion at the committee level, there is a, an old VOR building that's now derelict, obsolete, whatnot, and we kind of thought, while eventually, we are hoping to expand our, uh, industrial park out that direction, what the possibility might be if, uh, if we're willing to, um, allow this portion of land to be taken and used and whatnot, as lo, as well as the path leading out to that structure, what's left of it. The possibility of that maybe going away, for lack of better terminology.
Um, obviously, it doesn't just get taken down by itself, you know, for no cost, but I mean, it's something that we could look at, you know, if that's something that, uh, Sean would like us to entertain, and we could, uh, definitely look at, see what that would cost, or what it entails.
Okay. Fair enough.
Would you like to direct staff for that?
I think, yeah, that would be something that I believe staff is probably going to continue to talk about, but I believe it would be a good idea.
Okay. Just some discussion. I'm, I'm sorry, Councilmember Alvarado.
Um, I was just gonna thank Sean for, um, working with, uh, Hoffman and trying to, um, make sure we got the right taxiway and, uh, get that taken care of. I like the reclaiming of that taxiway back to natural, um, look. I appreciate that cooperation, and I, I appreciate the, um, going after that VOR, um, talking about that, because it'd be kind of funny to have us strip a, a concrete, going to the VOR and not using it up. So I appreciate you considering that, Mr. Hoffman. Thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just some comments. Councilmember Schwantus.
For those of us who do not know, what is the VOR building?
Mr. Christensen.
Councilmember Schwantus, um, VOR stands for, believe it or not, Very High Frequency Omnidirectional Radio Beacon. VOR. So, it's a, it's an airport, um, it helps, uh, for instrument landing at airports.
Thank you.
Just some questions or comments. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Mr. Christensen.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of the council, item C, letter C, item fifteen, is the use of the airport runway as a staging area for piping equipment. Um, for the same project, the Wilmer Y project, the, uh, idea here is to allow Hoffman Construction to stage some material on the old runway in anticipation of using that for the project. But the trade-off on this one is that the material will be removed before we need the area for snow removal, for snow storage.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve, uh, use of the old airport as a staging area for piping equipment and removal, uh, once needed for snow removal, or snow storage. Just those, discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Thank you, Sean, for your work on this and, uh, bringing this information to us. Next is consideration of a temporary liquor permit, uh, for Wilmer Lakes Rotary Club. Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the Wilmer Lakes Rotary Club has plans to purchase and sell alcohol during their Rockin' Robins Community Festivals located at Robins Island, which will be held July sixteenth, July twenty-third, July thirtieth, and August sixth. And they are asking, um, for us to approve a state application and permit for a one-day to four-day temporary on-sale liquor license for that event, and it's staff's recommendation for council to approve it.
Moved and approved. Motion made and seconded to approve, uh, temporary liquor permit for the Wilmer Lakes Rotary Club for the Rockin' Robins events. Discussion. Roll call. Councilmember Fagerly.
Can I ask Judy a question?
Go ahead.
Clerk Thompson, do they get four separate permits then, or is it one that's good for four events?
They get four separate permits.
So it's a hundred dollars per?
Fee per event.
It is.
Mm-hmm.
So if it was continuous, uh, four consecutive days, they'd only need one?
They'd only pay one for, one, one fee, yes.
And that would be?
That would be the hundred dollars.
Just one hundred dollars?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Because there's. Because there's breaks, it's not four consecutive, so we have to have a separate permit for each one.
Okay. So Councilman Mesky and myself talked with the fair board member, and they wanted to have liquor out there, and they needed four separate ones, was it?
Any more than that. Yeah, I don't know how the ordinance reads, we may want to take a look at that because we heard from people that wanted to do small breweries in their region, having a thing at the, at our fair, and they were told that every day of the fair would have to be another liquor license to be able to participate in something like that because every day is a new event at the fair instead of a single permit to span the length of the fair. And so this seems similar, is that how we interpret that? I know it's not germane, it's not exactly the same question, but.
Yeah, you know, breweries run, there's different guidelines for those, but, yeah, I'm not aware of what your event, I wouldn't want to comment until I knew all the details on that. This is, a one-to-four day permit is allowed only once every 30 days unless you have it designated as a festival. And a couple of years ago, we did designate Rockin' Robins as a city festival. So then the state would allow us to have the four separate one-to-four days within the 30-day period.
Also there. All right. I just wanted clarification on that, so.
So is that the Kenyon County Fair or a different fair?
It was our county fair, they had said that they were going to apply and they would have to have paid the fee for every day of the fair, and they didn't think that that sounded like a very good deal. Because they can only have so many permits that they can pull to participate in, in a certain timeframe. And they wanted to be able to participate in the fair as a single unit. So I'm, I, there's probably all kinds of nuances in the, in the liquor law here, but it's something that I think we need to take a look at.
Because I thought we approved the Kenyon County Fair like a year, like a meeting or two ago.
I know, we've approved several things, I'd, to say exact, I don't know. But what Sean's referring to, I guess I have not been approached on that item.
Okay. Okay, additional comments? All, a roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantus.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Uh, that motion passes. Next, we have the mayor's comments. Just a reminder of the email I sent to the council last week. The groundbreaking ribbon cutting, if you will, for the Wilmer Y project will be on the, is it the eighth or ninth, Sean? On the ninth at 2:00 on the west end of the runway. And so just a reminder to the council, if you choose to go to that. Also, we should probably list that, Ms. Thompson, as a potential full council. More than four council members might be there, you might want to do that. The other thing is, we have a council mini-retreat on July 29th, and just a question of the council, if you want us to have a facilitator at that or not. There really wasn't clear direction, there was some conversation of maybe we should have a facilitator, and then there was conversation that maybe we didn't need one. So for the mini-retreat, are you wanting to have a facilitator present for that or not? Councilmember Nelson.
I thought that was our night to review salary surveys in Springstead.
That's correct, but we're listing it as a mini-retreat. For, that's the fifth meeting in the council, when they set their agenda, they said that those would be the mini-retreats, so.
But Springstead was planning to come to review that, so do you think we need someone besides that?
I don't personally, but I just, I, I don't want to make a decision without the council because otherwise I'll get criticized for that. So I'm asking the council what you wish to do. I don't think there's a need for it because we're going to have Springstead here, but.
I just was concerned that we aren't adding other things onto the agenda that night because I think it's going to be a full night, so I was just trying to understand what a mini-retreat meant.
I believe that's what we said we wanted, I believe. Is that right? Am I wrong?
I think, I believe you're correct, Mr. Mayor.
So, I know that, I know that, I've been contacted about adding additional things to that meeting already, and I've kind of said I'm not really sure how we're going to get the items on the agenda. How we kind of have done the retreats in the past is the mayor and the administrator have kind of put those together, and we kind of run them by the council. So I'm trying to prepare for that so that we don't end up at the meeting in two weeks and then people going, oh, man, I didn't think about it, so I'm trying to bring it to you early.
I guess I just express a concern that I thought we should just focus on labor that night because I think that's going to be a full plate for us, so.
Okay. Just some comments? Our city administrator and our city clerk, so the mini-retreat will be a labor agenda. Um, so it'll be, Springstead's will be presenting their findings. So, and for the rest of the council members who have talked to me about bringing other things to that meeting, we'll just keep it as, as the Springstead Labor Meeting, so, okay? We have other comments about that, you can get Brian or myself, and we can bring it back to you as a council to kind of talk about that. Councilmember Osmas.
Thank you. Why, why, not that we have to get into terminology, but why isn't it just a work session? I thought it was, that those were just, the fifth Mondays were going to be considered a work session to just be able to delve into some subjects that we haven't had the time to really discuss at a full council meeting.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, I'm just kind of trying to go with what the council had requested.
Okay.
I'm trying to follow the direction that was given. I mean, we can certainly call them a, a work session, but I think there was some angst over calling things work session because people don't want us, some people don't want us going back to work sessions, so they didn't want.
Okay.
Maybe some of you that spoke about that might want to mention it, why you, why you felt it was necessary to call it a mini-retreat. I like the idea of a mini-retreat, that's what I thought we'd agreed to.
Okay.
Okay. I attended, along with Councilmember Nelson and Councilmember Osmas, Minnesota League of Cities Annual Conference up in Duluth, and there was a lot of good information shared, a lot of good things, learned a lot of things. We were up there, I think all of us were there Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday of last week, and so we spent a fair amount of time networking and engaged in different processes, so. Just to let the council know that, I will be given a, a report out also on our trip to Washington, DC. I think, I think I may have sent that to all of you, on a synopsis of our trip to Washington, DC. Dr. Ramstead and myself attended on behalf of the city. It was also a very good, good meeting, and we had a lot of good interaction on Highway 23, and a lot of good results from that as well, so. Council members, start with Councilmember Mesky.
Pass.
Councilmember Schwantus.
I just wanted to say a thank you to the Wilmer Fest Board. It was a really great city celebration, the fireworks were spectacular. So that doesn't happen without a lot of hard work and effort, and so thank you to everyone who worked on that and for the folks who came out and participated in it, it was really fantastic, and, and have a safe Fourth of July.
Councilmember Davis.
I also want to say have a safe and happy Fourth of July.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to share with the community that we just passed the liquor permit for the Rotarians, for the Rockin' Robins, those are excellent, fun, family events to attend on July 16th, July 23rd, July 30th, and August 6th. If you haven't been, please attend, they're a great, great community event and a lot of fun. Be safe, be smart when you celebrate the Fourth of July, thank you.
Councilmember Osmas.
I would just like to thank the city for the opportunity to go to Duluth, to the League of Minnesota Training. It was, it was excellent. And also hats off to the employees for all the work that they put into Wilmer Fest, from our fabulous float, to loading up all the barricades and the traffic control and everything that goes into that kind of an event. Just, it's, it's much appreciated and it looked like everything ran smooth. And I would also reiterate, everybody have a happy and safe Fourth of July.
Councilwoman Plowman.
Yeah, I'll, I'll echo that about Wilmer Fest, pretty much all departments that were involved across the city, that I could see everything was well-run and well-executed, and that takes a good, a good group of people, so thank you. Everybody had a great time. And fun fact regarding the VOR, if you remember back many years, for a long time, all summer long, we'd see very large C-130s that would make big passes and big turns over top of the city, and that was the Air National Guard from North Dakota, Minnesota, and Wisconsin would use our VOR as their turnaround point. And that was antiquated when, when the VOR was shut down, but, yeah, I remember that going all the way back to some of my earliest memories, so that's how I know about the VOR. There you go, nothing else.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I too would just like to say thank you for the opportunity to go to the league meeting. It is great networking, both with people from our area and also from around the state. I had the opportunity to be part of a panel discussion on leaders, women in leadership, which was fun. There were four of us that participated in that, and so I would encourage, encourage you, everyone else, to check your calendars when there are future meetings coming. The coalition meeting will be in the end of July up in Bemidji, so there are great opportunities to learn about things that are going on that affect our city, both at the legislature and others, so I would say thank you for that and enjoy the Fourth.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Just have a safe Fourth, thank you.
Mayor, could I have a mulligan?
You certainly can.
I just, about the, the, the league, as far as the awards that were given to the cities, I, because this is the first one I attended, I didn't really know what to expect, but I thought it would be some big thing that they accomplished in their community, but I think all of them had to do with water quality and, and their wastewater treatment plants. And so I just want to say hats off. Again, you know, we take that for granted when our toilets flush and our water comes out clean. But that, it was, that was, surprised me.
Councilmember Nelson.
I'll take a mulligan too. Green Steps program, we participated in that for years, we have steps one and steps two, and we have walked away from that after a volunteer had, I think Andy Beer had kept that going, so I would challenge us to come up with some initiatives to get back into the Green Steps program and to look at what we can do to earn our next level. I think it would be great for our community and for the environment, too.
I agree. I was going to give council the opportunity to give kudos to our police chief. We received an email today from Brian talking about some good work that our police chief did on mitigating a, a kind of a hostile situation that was happening in another community, and he was able to offer some wisdom and insight, and so she felt on behalf of the council, the mayor's office, we, we want to give you accolades as well for the job you do. Every day you do a good job, and we don't recognize our staff enough to do that. I know when I looked at the report that Vicki had asked to have prepared, there's a lot of things we can do in there that are very, very simple, like Councilmember Mesky said in his report, and one of those is giving accolades to our staff when they do a good work. I think part of the problem is, is that our staff always does a good job, and, you know, you know, sometimes I'm criticized for calling somebody out and telling them they did a good job, and, but she felt, I've known you ever since I came to Wilmer, and you are one of the best, if not the best, in the state, so we're very fortunate to have you, so thank you for your leadership, your wisdom, and your tenacity to do the right thing, so appreciate that, so. With that, I'll entertain a question.